Under that language, how did you envision for the collectives to obtain their marijuana? Would they have to grow it on their own? And did you envision them growing it at that site where they're located, place of business? Or do you envision them having some site somewhere else?
Yes to both.
Please hold my time.
Yes to both of your questions, Councilman. With respect to, yes, it was envisioned that they would cultivate onsite and not obtain it from other locations.
And not obtain it from other locations?
Correct.
So they would have to put it onsite. Okay. And that's reasonable, given an urban area like ours, the areas that we're kind of putting into motion, there's distance requirements, et cetera. Would it be reasonable for collectives to have five pounds of dried marijuana, 100 plants of any size, for them to cultivate at that site? How long would it take to dry five pounds of marijuana?
Councilman, at the risk of sounding flippant, I bet your audience could answer that question better than we. But there is a sincere answer to part of your question, which is, the Medical Marijuana Program Act is completely predicated on there being a model of collective cultivation. That's its principal purpose, is to allow patients to have ID cards, to have primary caregivers, and for those entities to collectively cultivate.
This is hard to follow. At one level, we had a very specific ordinance, language, that says, you can only have five pounds of dried marijuana, you could only have 100 plants at the location. And now we have an amendment that says, delete that, let's follow state law. And it's hard to figure out what following state law means here. I mean, I don't know what the effect is and the impact and how we're going to operate. And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Very good. I'm going to try and parse this, Councilman. Of course, I've only seen it for the last...
I saw it one minute ago, so...
Very good. I saw it the same time you did. I think we have two implications. One is quantity. We were trying to provide a specific quantity limit, so that you could rest assured that these facilities would not be Costco's and the like. And to achieve that quantity limit, we relied on our police department to give us a frame of reference, and we put that into the language. But we did a second thing. And the second thing we did is, we specifically required that the marijuana be collectively cultivated at the location, at the collective, or at your previous collective if you've gone out of business for no fault of your own and you've simply moved your operation. So we were doing two things. First, a quantity. And secondly, the location at where your marijuana was produced. And both of those have been impacted by the amendment. There is no longer a quantity, and there most certainly isn't a requirement that it be cultivated at the location.
Because state law does not speak to quantity?
State law does not speak to quantity.
And it does not speak to where you could grow the marijuana?
State law does speak to where you could grow it, but if you take a look at this precise language, this language is only talking about quantity.
Okay. But, I see. So we took away, through this amendment, quantity amount and where you grow it. And the amendment, all it does is affect how much you could grow.
Correct.
And it says nothing about where you can grow it. That's the effect of this?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I would be opposed to this. Because one of the things we're trying to avoid is to get black market marijuana at these collectives. And if we have no control and be able to know where the collectives are obtaining their marijuana, it's going to be very easy for these collectives to get marijuana from the black market. And one good way that was put to me earlier by another council member is that we are coming, we would be supporting an illegal act by encouraging the black market to sell marijuana to these collectives. We have to control and be able to know where this marijuana is coming from.
Proposing a cap on salaries for the employees of collectives, District 7 Council Member Richard Alakon discusses the dispensary located in the same building as his field office.
We know that there's a lot of money involved in these organizations, and there's temptation to amass even more money. I mentioned anecdotally that the operation that is just below my office, in the two-story building in Silmar, makes $12,000 a day. Now, that information came from one of my staff members with an LAPD officer president, who went inside and asked the owner, "How much you made a day?" And they said, "$12,000 a day." Now, I don't know whether he was lying or not, but that's a lot of money. And it's not the largest organization out there. But that's too much money. I don't, I think the operation could exist and cover its expenses for a lot less than that. One of the concerns I have is relative to the, how much the people operating these things, that the supposed compassionate assistants, and don't get me wrong, they are out there, those who are the advocates for the compassionate aspects of this, I don't think they would mind having a cap if they are truly compassionate. The ones who would mind having a cap on salaries would be those who want to take advantage of this situation to profit from it. Now, even though these are going to be nonprofit organizations, they can still make a lot of money. And the way you do that is just by paying high salaries. So 10W is an amendment to require that the ordinance include a provision that nobody should make more than $100,000 a year.
Addressing the compassionate use issue, District 3 Council Member Dennis Zine says many of the clinics are masking illegal marijuana use under the guise of true medical need.
If this was truly the Compassionate Use Act 215, we wouldn't have upwards of 900 to 1,000 locations in the city of Los Angeles, making tremendous amount of money. Compassionate use means not to make a lot of money. Mr. Alakon says $100,000. If they have two or three people involved, that could be $200,000 to $300,000. I've heard upwards of thousands of dollars that have been taken in the police raids at facilities. If we want to be real with it, we know that many doctors are writing these notes for any kind of ailment, and we know that it's really masking the legitimacy of marijuana under the medical aspect. So if we want to talk about a collective that's compassionate use under 215, we need to be real with the income or what they're charging. And if you go to a facility, and I've been to three facilities, they have the mark board, and it tells how much you're paying for the different product. There's no question that we wouldn't be where we are now with the number if they weren't making a whole lot of money. And that money's not going to help sick people. That money is going to help people who want to be wealthy, and they found a lucrative way to skirt the system. And that's what it's about. We need to get down to what the 215 is about, the Compassionate Use Act, for people who have illnesses, where they get a legitimate doctor's note, and they can do it in a proper fashion, versus someone who wants to get high, and they play that game, and then they get high under the note of a doctor. And there was a broadcast on a major television station, a major network, and this doctor said that anyone who comes in can get a note for medical marijuana. So let's be real with it, we're talking about the profit margin, there's a huge profit margin. We need to focus on compassion for people who need it for legitimate medical purposes. And that's the key. So I agree that there should be a cap on it, but also, if you're a nonprofit, we know that people can receive expensive compensation packages. We need to bring it down, so the cost to the people who need it isn't excessive, as we see in many cases. So the bottom line is, medical issues, serious medical issues. And the next thing we need to pursue, and I think Mr. Weston has a motion moving forward to check on the doctors who have basically given up their medical practice and simply in business to write these notes, so people can get this substance, and they're charging $100 to $200. So those doctors have really violated their oath to be there to help people, and they become involved in this lucrative process. So it's frustrating that we see the abuse that's taking place, meanwhile, people have AIDS and cancer and are dying, and they need it to keep themselves somewhat comfortable. And there are people who are ripping them off, and that's the wrong thing to do.
Believing the council is losing focus on the real issue, District 15 Council Member Janice Hahn encourages her colleagues to concentrate on regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries.
I thought our goal was to figure out how to take the Compassionate Use Act, which basically says, anyone who needs this, and has been prescribed this by a doctor, will be able to have safe access. Now you're going after the compensation of the people who are running these, and now we're going to go after the doctors who are writing these notes. This is so far... Honestly, if you take that logic, that everybody who's in compassionate profession shouldn't be making more than $100,000, I think we could go after every doctor, every cancer specialist, every... You know, really. I had to get up and speak on this one. This is not our business. Our business is to regulate these facilities the best way we can, deal with LAPD, building and safety, but really, when you're starting to get into how much people are making, and doctors who are... That's not what we're here for, and I'm going to vote no on this one, because it's just not any of our business. Let's stay focused on what we're doing, which is to regulate these dispensaries, but making sure that people have safe access. I mean, everything from the air filtration to the compensation, this is just not our business, I don't believe. So let's stay focused. I think you're taking one ordinance of one particular industry and trying to throw in the entire kitchen sink. It's, really, it's a little bit disturbing, colleagues. Let's stay focused on what we're here to do.
Mr. Alakon?
With all due respect, Janice, I think we are very focused on this issue. And I do believe that, you know, first of all, there are, I don't know which industry you're talking about, the illegal marijuana industry, or the new concept that is for these thousand, this industry that we've created by accident that is operating illegally. I don't know if that's the industry you are concerned about capping their salaries. I don't know exactly what you're talking about there. But let me tell you this, we do have requirements for our nonprofit agencies that are contracted with us. We do not overcompensate them. There are standards for nonprofit entities, and those are the standards we should use to drive this ordinance. Now, I, so I'm happy to amend my motion to say that the ordinance should reflect industry standards established by the United Way for the operation of nonprofits. They have them, and not just compensation for executives, compensation across the board, but we can get those. So I absolutely believe we should do this, where this industry is ripe with people ripping off money from those who are truly seriously ill, versus those who have a small crick in their back. And that's not what this is about, folks. You want to legalize marijuana, change the law. I have no problem with that. Make it like beer, as far as I'm concerned, I don't care. But if you want to act as if it's already legal, you are wrong. We've got to, we've got to do things in accordance to the law. And when I read the law, and when I read the interpretations of the law by the Attorney General, by the court system, by, yes, the DA, and by the city attorney, it is pretty clear to me, it is not vague. We are currently operating over hundreds and hundreds of these illegally. And so we've got to get real, if we are truly going to give marijuana to those who have serious, truly serious injuries. So, yes, I believe we ought to cap the compensation, because I believe it will be abused. People will be making millions of dollars, millions of dollars, if we do not cap it.
Additional amendments to the ordinance were also discussed, including placing a cap on the number of outlets that would be allowed to operate in the city. Well, District 13 Council Member Eric Garcetti believes this is the most important part of the debate.
This is the crux of the matter. This is the most important part for us. It is not at all to dismiss the debate that's gone on between cash transactions, it is not at all to say that there are some very important issues, but I think if you talk to the average Angelinos, the regulation of and the number of, which are intimately interrelated, because the number will affect our city's capacity to actually regulate. Look at billboards. We've been overwhelmed by the number, and our ability to inspect has been directly related to that. This is what Angelino's care boasts about. It certainly is what I've heard the most from my constituents when there's been complaints of any collectives or dispensaries. At Water Village was a good example, in which we saw five open up in a three-block radius, and we worked with the community very quickly, and thank you to Mr. Reyes, to get ones that were using the hardship exemption without any hardship, close down, and back to a more regulated manner. But this is a really, really important piece, and it's part of the reason I came, I stepped down to speak on this. One of the things we've discussed is that, I think there's been, a majority of colleagues that I've talked to have said that they believe there should be some special consideration to those who played by the rules. We also know, though, and have talked to a lot of community members and city staff, that just because you played by the rules to put things out there doesn't mean you haven't violated other rules. So it's very critical for us not to say that these are grandfathered in an automatic way, as Mr. Carruthers said, but that they be given some due consideration, some due process. Because part of this is also protecting ourselves legally, to make sure we're doing this in the right manner, to say, "Look, we set rules, we changed the rules," but we're not going to go back and say, "Just because the rules are changed, that you have no time to adjust to those." There should be some consideration. And one of the motions that's before us gives that six-month consideration to become compliant, to allow those to have some kind of first-in-line privileges, because we've been working with them, and more often than not, they've been good. That doesn't mean they've always been good, and many of them have gone out of business, which actually simplifies this process. I stood up last time saying I didn't want, and it wasn't a reflection of the number Mr. Weisart put forward per se, but I don't want the number to be too low, because I don't think it's, that there's a bunch of Costcos that are going to open. I just know that we, as council members, the bigger an entity is, you know, a big entity gets more complaints than a smaller entity. It also may be, it may simplify for the police the ability to regulate, so those are also push and pull. In Oakland, they have four, for a town of, I don't know, about 300,000 people, I think, in Oakland. And they're able to, you know, regulate that, so maybe that isn't so big that it becomes a spillover effect. But we all know, whether it's Mr. Labonge talking about Secondhand Smoke, whether it's the impact in a neighborhood, and in certain districts as well, you know, there's less land. Mr. Reyes and I both have about 13 square miles, so if we look at population, when people pack more tightly together, you just get more land use complaints, because the spillover effect of a bad bar, of a bad store, of a bad anything, always affects more people just by that population density. I think we're honing in on a pretty good number. I think it is probably somewhere, you know, between going about 70 and maybe 150. I mean, I'm feeling that that is a good place to go. And the reason I would say this is because it's always easier to say, "There aren't enough," and open up more, and we saw how quickly the marketplace was flooded, with, you know, it's a relatively low startup cost, people can do this, collectives can come together relatively quickly. So I'm not worried about our ability to wind up. I am worried about our ability to wind down. That's the problem Los Angeles faces right now, is it wound up so quickly that we had 1,000 that we'd have to process now on hardship exemptions, which overwhelms the bureaucracy, and maybe that was the point for some people. But it affects us and it affects our constituents, many of whom need access, and good access from a good operator, and many who want to make sure that they have a neighborhood where they can have their rights respected as well.
After the public comment period, the marathon meeting ended with a birthday acknowledgement.
We're going to look at taking this up on Wednesday, colleagues, next Wednesday. So please come back a week from tomorrow, we will have this here. Thank you all for your patience, for your hard work, and have a great Thanksgiving. Mr. Clerk, if you will please go to the next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? Obviously, we had committees that were counseled today, education, neighborhoods, and other ones. Any other announcements before tomorrow? Any adjourning motions before tomorrow? All right. Well, if there are no others, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alakon, Hahn, Weisart, Carruthers, Labonge, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Zine, and Garcetti.
And before everybody goes and the cameras are off, I want to wish the council member from the 7th District a very happy birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Alakon.
It's been...
This was our present. Remember to blow out those candles.
And with those revisions, the ordinance was sent back to the city attorney's office for yet another draft to be considered on Wednesday, December 2nd. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the City's Council Phone System. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys or San Pedro City Halls and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending November 27th, 2009. On behalf of Michael Martin and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning. The quorum call, waiting the arrival of Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas. To begin our council meeting, Mr. Wesson. Please come to council chambers so we can begin our council meeting for Tuesday, December 1st. We are waiting the quorum. We're waiting one more to begin our council meeting for December 1st. So, we will do that momentarily. While we're awaiting the arrival, Mr. Wesson, good morning. We are now at a quorum. Good morning and welcome to December 1st, Tuesday. Welcome to council chambers, Los Angeles City Hall. It's the meeting of Los Angeles City Council. Today again is December 1st, Tuesday. Council meets three times a week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website, www.lacity.org. Audio of our meetings is available on council phone by dialing 213-621-CITY. I'm Councilmember Dennis Zein, joined by councilmembers Hahn, Corretts, Labonge-Parks, Reyes, Rosenthal-Smith, Wesson, and Garcetti. We will begin our council meeting. If you'd like to be heard on items listed on today's agenda or general public comment for items not on the agenda but are under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card, bill at the back of the council chambers, or in Van Nuys City Hall, or San Pedro. I'd like to thank council members who have arrived. We'll have a few presentations, and we will begin, Mr. Clerk, with your announcements.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weesa, Corretts, Labonge-Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal-Smith, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President?
Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Reyes, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretts and Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
A flag salute for today. Mr. Corretts, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you have a public comment cards here? Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. The agenda, Mr. Clerk.
First items on the agenda, items 1 through 7 are building and safety liens, notice for public hearing. The department indicates that items 1 and 4 may be received and filed, and there is a request to continue item 7, one week to December 8th.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Yeah, Mr. President, you would need a vote on items 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Open the roll on 2, 3, 5, and 6. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 8 is the Highland Park Property Business Improvement District Notice for Public Hearing, and there is a card on that.
Call that special.
Items 9 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 19, the applicant is requesting a continuance to January 20th of next year.
Without objection on the continuance. Mr. Corretts?
Item 15, special.
One, five?
Yes.
One, five, special for Mr. Corretts. Any other specials, colleagues? Those items, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next items, please.
Items 23 through 38 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
23 through 38. We have speaker cards on some of those items?
Yes, Mr. President, and the ordinance is, there should be 12 members today. Do you wish to hold those?
Yes, please, please hold those.
Items 23 through 28.
We'll hold those.
And there are cards on items 29?
The ones where we have cards, let's hold those. Call those special.
And 30, 31, 32, 33, 36, 37, and 38.
Okay. We'll call those special.
34 and 35 before council.
Very well. Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call 34, special.
34, special for Mr. Corretts. Mr. Parks?
We have 13 forthwith, and also on 33, if we can have that out of order, it's called special.
You were bringing that up earlier?
Yeah, we have a detective that should be working.
Very well, we will do that. That'll be the directive. On the remaining items, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
That would take council back to the items called special or public comment.
All right, we have the detectives here. Let's take those items, and then we'll go to public comment. Mr. Parks, items with the LAPD detectives?
Much, Mr. President. Let me ask Dennis Kilcoyne to come up. This is a renewal of a reward motion. Many of us recall that Detective Kilcoyne is working on a serial homicide case that spans, which is very unique, over a three-decade period. And so, I'd like him to give the information and also what new information may be available and his contact numbers.
Good morning. Two and a half years ago, the Los Angeles Police Department formed a task force at my direction to attempt to identify and arrest the, what the media has dubbed, the Grim Sleeper, serial killer. Since 1985, this man has been responsible for 11 murders and one brutal assault and attempted murder in the city of Los Angeles. He is unusual in the fact that he hits from 1985 to 1988. He took a long respite. He resurfaced again in 2002, where he murdered another young lady. 2003, he stopped again, and he surfaced again in January of 2007. The city council, at the request of Councilman Parks, some time ago, put up a reward, a $50,000 reward, for each of the 10 Los Angeles City victims totaling $500,000, which I believe is the largest reward in the history of the city of Los Angeles. We are here today to request that the reward be renewed in our ongoing effort to capture this individual. Most recently, the media, at the media's request and the request of some community organizations, we released a composite drawing from our surviving victim in 1987. This drawing here, keeping in mind that it's 20-some years old, is, we are in the process of having it aged enhanced by various entities in the government, and we will release that in the next couple of weeks. We are also in the process of moving our offices to the new Police Administration Building, and we will be releasing our new phone contact information probably next week. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Detective. Let me just, the public consumption is that, just to go over the names, the city cases that these rewards are for is Deborah Jackson, 1985, Henrietta Wright, 1986, Bernita Sparks, 1987, Barbara Ware, 1987, Thomas Steele, 1987, Mary Lowe, 1987. We have a surviving victim in 1988. Also, Alicia Alexander, 1988, Valerie McCovey, 2003, and Janicia Peters, 2007. We have two victims that are outside of the city, one in Inglewood and one in the county, that are also part of this task force. The reward for the city of L.A. is $500,000, but we put a caveat in there that no person could receive over $200,000 for their efforts. And so, we'd ask Detective to just give his numbers one more time before they, he'll be changing numbers very shortly because he's moving to the new facility, and so get those numbers to the public, and we ask for any assistance in solving this three-decade-old homicide case.
There are a number of ways to reach the Los Angeles Police Department and provide information. There's a toll-free phone number at 877-LAPD247, which comes out to 877-527-3247. We also receive tips by text messaging these days, and you text in the word LAPD to Crimes We also receive anonymous web tips through the LAPDOnline.org. So, there are a number of ways to send information to the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Detective. On this matter, John Walsh?
John Walsh, public speaker on this matter. We'd like, in particular, to thank the L.A. Weekly, which started, it wasn't the L.A. Times that went after this, it wasn't the L.A. Times that nicknamed the Grim Sleeper. They were asleep at the L.A. Times. It was the L.A. Weekly that did the story. And I don't understand why police nickname every single bank robber, but they don't nickname serial killers. I think we should have the police from now on nickname every serial killer once we find out that, in fact, there are serial killings. A half a million dollars, cheaper, twice the price. And if you want any more information, you can always come to me if you want to confess, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'll send it right over to the LAPD. Thank you. One minute.
Thank you, Detective Kilcoyne, and thank you, Mr. Walsh. We'll now go to the public comment.
Mr. President, a vote is required on that.
Oh, on the matter, okay. Open the roll. Mr. Parks, will you complete on that? Any other comments? Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, thank you. Now we'll go to the public comment. Dr. Williams?
Mr. President, before a public comment, there are now 12 members. Do you wish to take up the ordinances?
Let's do that. Mr. Williams, hold on one minute, please.
And those are items?
Your ordinance numbers?
23 through 28.
23 through 28, any comments? Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well. Okay, Dr. Williams, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Cerrino, Northeast LA. Stop the 710. This afternoon, one of your committees will be considering a resolution regarding 710. A little bit of the background, why? The current study is terribly flawed. They can't even get Huntington Drive accurately identified on their maps. Every map except one identifies Huntington Drive as Mission Road, which is actually in Lincoln Heights and in El Hammer. So even the CLA got it wrong. So they changed everything during the process of developing this report. They don't even know what geology is. They have not presented the information in any sort of reasonable compiled manner. But this is what we have grown to expect from Caltrans, and now from MTA. So all we're asking for is a simple resolution from the City Council to be modified from what is currently being proposed upstairs in the committee, to have no portal north of Valley Boulevard, if they can figure that one out. Thank you.
Donna Perman in Van Nuys? Donna Perman?
Hello, I'm Donna Perman. I'm sorry, Miriam Vogler couldn't be here, she's not feeling well, I'm sorry, Miriam. Anyway, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm sorry you couldn't be at the marijuana, the thing with the marijuana people. Please, you need the help, we need to have the reasonable restrictions. And by the way, your little magazine has something on medical marijuana. Anyway, please vote for Kvarian, not Essel, or you'll have, if you want to save your neighborhood, and it won't be taken by the CRA with a tax increment dollars. Anyway, mass transit. You tell, the City Council wants to take mass transit. When I went to get an EZ Pass on November 27th, my birthday, November 26th was a holiday, only one was left. Luckily, I went early in the morning, but the tap card's only good for Metro. They're not good for buses like Community Express LA dot. I need a paper pass. I can't buy it online because my work pays for it. It's unacceptable, because the City Council spends all the money for rail projects. We need more, we need, we need something now. We need more buses in Westwood Village, Councilman Corretts. We need more buses in West Los Angeles. A lot of buses don't go towards Santa Monica, they stop short. We need more buses in Valley, especially Woodman. People won't take buses, many stops don't even have benches. I said stay less than minutes, and quickly. One little thing, um, I say, oh yeah, uh, forget it, I'm what people say, oh yeah. And I was going to say my words to downtown, but, oh yeah. And City Council staff that eat a lot of brownies, they're not from the city, they're probably out-of-townies. What can you lose? The air is much denser now, you can figure out all your troubles for your cares to go downtown. Rapists are waiting for downtown. Buggers are waiting for downtown. Everyone's waiting for you. Comforting, huh? Thank you.
Michael Hubman?
Good morning. I would like to make four practical suggestions regarding the proposed Los Angeles Municipal Code Ordinance regulating medical marijuana collectives. One, I speak to the proposal to have city financial services monitor the not-for-profit status of medical marijuana collectives. Instead of city monitoring, the ordinance should simply require the city permitted collectives to file state and federal tax returns as nonprofit corporations. This will shift the burden of monitoring of the nonprofit status of city permitted collectives from the city to the State Board of Equalization and the IRS. Will the IRS allow medical marijuana collectives to operate a nonprofit corporation? The City Council should ask the lawyers. Two, I am concerned about possible banning of smoking of medical marijuana in all outdoor spaces of the city. Doing this will disenfranchise homeless medical marijuana patients. Three, I oppose the proposal that cash not be allowed as a medium of exchange between collective members of city permitted collectives. Requiring collective members to use credit debit accounts and not cash will disenfranchise collective members who don't bank. Four, I object to the proposal that each member of the city permitted collective must obtain a state medical marijuana identification card. The doctor's recommendations have been the controlling eligibility document throughout the history of Proposition 215. There is no need, excuse me, there is no need to add an additional layer of bureaucracy. This will only add to the cost of obtaining medical marijuana for the medical marijuana patient. Thank you.
Zuma Dog?
Yes, it's nice to see Councilmember Dennis Zine, my third favorite council member behind Rosendahl and Parks. Good morning, City Council. Zuma Dog from my website, ZumaDog.org. And I'm here, first of all, to issue a citizens' alert. We have an election December 8th, a week from today, Tuesday. I am here to urge you to support Christine Essel. We have Carmen Tutanich, Dennis Zine, Bill Rosendahl, the PPL, and Zuma Dog, all urging your support for Christine Essel. Councilman Richard Allerton endorses Krikorian. So there you go, people who are sitting at home wondering which way to go on this, you're not sure who to vote for, and you're wondering, gee, how could Zuma Dog be supporting Christine Essel? For all of her histories and ties to City Hall and for all the money, people are wondering, how could you, Zuma Dog? It's because I'm so concerned as to what will happen if Paul Krikorian becomes council member. We do not need another state assembly member in these council chambers. He made a promise to voters, recently re-elected, now he's walking away to use our city as a career seat jumping on his next thing, and I can go on forever. So I'm here to say, I think the most despicable thing that could happen is if Paul Krikorian becomes City Council member. So I urge you again, Tutanich, Zine, Rosendahl, PPL, Zuma Dog, and many other community leaders who are not bamboozled or suckered by what a politician will say in an election season who's a state bankrupting assembly member. You gotta be crazy, people. So please, help me trigger future bipolar rages by not having Paul Krikorian in here ever. Now, I'd like to say that City TV 35, they did not rebroadcast the council meeting of the budget hearing, and I'm here to tell people, we'll get into this, Zuma Dog is back to discuss the budget, massive firings, departments being eliminated, loss of services, doomsday is here, people, doomsday is here, and they won't play it on TV.
Thank you, Zuma Dog. John Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, for what you can't find in the LA Times, 18,000 hits per week, up from 16,000. Paul Krikorian, vote for him. Christine Essel is now the third highest money-wise campaign in the history of the City Council. She is the special interests politician. Christine Essel is a CRA board member, wrote against her. 60 Minutes will be coming in on the medical marijuana, if you want to read what actually happened, what's happening now, how the Mexican mafia controls many of the shops, the dispensaries, how the gangs control many of the shops, and how the drugs, the medical marijuana is sprayed with parquat, with poison, and is killing more people, more patients, very ill patients, than it is saving. You are the shame of Los Angeles, including because you are receiving money, you are receiving campaign contributions from the pot industrial complex. Now, maybe you think this is the psychotic ravings of John Walsh, I'll give you a quote. We know some collectives are getting their marijuana from the Mexican cartels. That's John Duran, West Hollywood City Council. In fact, when 60 Minutes comes in here, I hope that Mary Jane, Mary Jane Han doesn't think, what she's done already has destroyed her chances of ever being lieutenant governor. I'm telling you now, we're asking, and incidentally, I believe there are two members of the City Council that have medical marijuana prescriptions. Is that true or false? If you have, among you 14, a medical marijuana prescription, I'm asking for full disclosure. HollywoodHighlands.org, look now, you'll find a lot more that I haven't had a chance to say. Check it now.
Matt Dowd?
So, yes, thank you, and of course, first thing I want to say is, with the rights that you get in this country also come responsibilities. That's why when you want to take away our rights to say what we want to say, Tom Labonge, and at this podium, we'll fight for that. It doesn't mean we're gonna, we have to use the words, but if you take it away, we're gonna fight to have it back, but we've got the right to determine when I want, when we want to use those. And that's the same thing with medical marijuana, and that's what I want to lead into. With the right to smoke pot, you've got a responsibility to make sure it's not out of control. And it's out of control, and the City Council, it's impossible for you guys to regulate the quality of 1,000 dispensaries dispensing a federally prohibited drug. So, and that's the reason it's federally prohibited, the one reason is there's no quality control at all. So the only way out of it, Paul Corretts, get together with the state and with Steve Cooley, and get the state to employ the best people, grow the best weed, have a website where you can go online, just like an air ticket or anything else, and you order it online through the state, get a coupon, and go to the state-approved distributor who's got the approved weed, and hand over the coupon and get your pot. It doesn't get any easier. You guys have fallen all over yourselves for hours and hours trying to control the quality of the weed. It's impossible. Now I have to yell because you make me so angry, all the hours and hours you're wasting trying to, trying to come up with the Los Angeles City Council regulations, which as Steve Cooley says, are irrelevant. Now I want to talk about the other relevancy, Venice Beach, I've only got 10 seconds left, see? Get Mark Brown in here, Tom Labonge, and tell him what the federal, get him to tell you what the federal judge said.
Dejay Cutie?
Good morning, Dejay Cutie, Central Hollywood. Good morning, Counsel, I want to thank you for all of your hard work last week, it was a very long meeting, and I think we made some very important headway. Earlier this week, I emailed most of your offices a letter that explains some of the problems I see with the ordinance, the two main ones being the caps, caps on the number of dispensaries. We have somewhere around 200,000 patients in the city, and if we have a very small number of dispensaries, you're going to create more problems than solutions, long lines, lots of cash transactions, dispensaries that have to have 25 or more pounds on site at all times. So I want you to think about that when you're considering the actual number of dispensaries. We do need to spread these through the city, we need to make sure there's smaller, more mom-and-pop shops, so we don't have the Megamart dispensaries that the city is concerned about. The other concern is, of course, the cap on the number of dispensaries that a patient can be a member. For example, I'm a legally qualified patient, I'm one of those people, I don't look like a patient, but if you could see my spine, you would understand. And I'm a member of probably over 100 dispensaries throughout the state, not because I'm acquiring medical cannabis through these dispensaries, but I run a nonprofit where I provide education, training, counseling, I have 20 years as a social worker. So I want you to know that not every member of a dispensary is there just to pick up their medical cannabis, there are a lot of other programs and projects going on within our dispensaries. I'm also dropping off two items for the clerk this morning, a hard copy of the letter that I provided you yesterday, as well as about 1,000 signatures from patients throughout the city who want you to do the right thing and protect safe, affordable access in Los Angeles. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you again tomorrow.
Behind you, ma'am. Richard Kearns?
Good morning, President Protam Zine, everybody, it's good to see you today. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 58-year-old gay man living with AIDS in LA for more than 20 years, a long-term survivor, a medical cannabis patient and activist, a poet and journalist. I want to make general comments about medical cannabis, and I can't attend tomorrow. I am a model of reasonable use for a person with AIDS. I depend on three storefront facilities to manage three layers of my treatment program: appetite control and weight, nausea and side effects in general, and pain management. I can't depend on being able to get everything at one dispensary. I have to go around, and I have regular use. I also get compassionate help, I live on a fixed income, so, for instance, I've had help purchasing a vaporizer, which I use with flowers, okay? I also use edibles, which are very important for me, able to be able to negotiate during the day, and I use concentrates, okay? All of this is part of a regular program, but I have to be able to get to places to do it. There's a place close to me now that's tossing out postcards, advertising for younger people, not medical cannabis, but just cannabis use for recreation. I wish I had a recreational drug, you know, but today is World AIDS Day, and it's important. I will be speaking with you later, but thank you very much for listening to me now. Thank you, bye.
Michael Kerian?
Thank you. Once again, I'm here to ask you why the property on Huntington Drive hasn't been cleaned yet. Some people say it takes a week or two, three. Mr. Reyes's office has taken over three months. Yet his assistant says they're doing a great job. That is a perfect example of how the city works. They say they're doing a great job, but the community has rats the size of opossums. Instead of cleaning the property, he rents it out. He rents it out to movie studios. We make money on it, or at least the city makes money, so you can spend as you see please, as you please, but the community suffers. When these movie studios go in, where do you think the rats go? Mr. Reyes, once again, turns his back to me because he doesn't want to face the truth. The rats go into the community, to his constituents. They go into their yards, they go into their homes, because of, they're being disturbed by the movie studios. But I guess it's just another way to make a buck. To hell with the constituents in Mr. Reyes's district, show me some money. If you don't live on North Broadway, or you don't own a business on North Broadway, or if you're not here for a liquor license on North Broadway, you don't count. If you have property on Huntington Drive, who cares? You're way over there in the corner. You're not in my district, you're on nobody's land. I came to his office, I went through the proper channels, and I've been here several times. I guess we got the old machismo, the old stubborn Mexican who's gonna say, let's see who wins this battle, you or me. Well, I'm an American Mexican also, and I'm gonna stay here until Mr. Reyes gets off that seat or tells his employees to clean their property.
Edgar Palacios?
Edgar Palacios? Thank you very much, good morning. My name is Edgar Palacios, and I do represent the 8th and Normandy Neighborhood, the 10th District, with Mr. Weston. Mr. Labonge, how are you today? Mr. Parks, thank you for being with us, also in a toy giveaway several years ago, as well, Mr. Weston. We do bring toys, we collect toys to our, in our community. We bring festivity to these children and smile. Bring toys to the children is something that you feel in the heart. And only one times in the year, when you see that beautiful smile of a children, is what you get in your heart forever, and that fills you and make you do this again. Why the new regulations after- Why the new regulations after September says that every organization, regardless of the situation of the organization, they have to pay the full amount of the bill? That's not a problem. The organization can assist through the volunteers and pay for these amounts, which is, don't, is no more than $10,000, $15,000. And the city regulations said, signed by the mayor on the 28th of September, said that these subsidy funds can assist with the 50% of that. Here is the point, in a city of Los Angeles, a diversified city with 210 different communities and 110 different ethnic, oh, and different languages, a diversified city have to suffer the inconvenience because the LAPD now said, "I want this amount of money." In the old event, that never been more than four police officers, except last year, 12, 12 police officers, and the bill by the motion signed by Mr. Weston said $13,500, today is $57,000, gentlemen, because the police officers said $46,000 in the bill. How can you do this?
Thank you, sir. Your, your time, Ms. Ron, thank you. Bruce Dariot of NIs.
Morning, city council members. I'm here once again to talk about the Malibu fiasco. Let the city attorney interject here. The Malibu pier debacle, which involves the Clean Water Act, the Racketeer Influence Corrupt Organization Act, Civil Rights Act, and, and other causes of action, has spanned 10 years. Took 10 years to build a pier, but it triggered several complex frauds on the people with local contractors here in Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. Los Angeles has been networked with leaders in Malibu and business leaders that live on the beach there for a long time. The levels of corruption from county, city, state, federal, you know, every member of the public is well aware that our government has deep-seated criminal activity going on. Where the Justice Department is, the FBI, local prosecutors, is nowhere to be found. There are MIA. We have a serious problem here in this government in investigating fraud and prosecuting fraud. When whistleblowers come forward and explain what's going on, there's two things that happen. Either it blows open in the press, or the press suppresses it with the government and it's just mowed under. And there's a lot of frauds that are going on that the press is covering up. When I say the press, Daily News, the L.A. Times, Channel 2, 4, 7, our local networks, it's Hollywood. Hollywood controls what's being heard here. Thank God for the internet, where there's true disclosure. But it's a farce. It's a farce. Go to MalibuPierScandal.com, read some of the letters to people like Brad Sherman and the President of the United States, and you'll be, you'll be enlightened as to what's been going on here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That concludes public comment for today. There is an item requested by Mr. Rosenthal, 37, and there's cards on that. Mr. Rosenthal, would you like to hear from the speakers first?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to do with Mr. Reyes is come on to the floor here, because this is a combination of a presentation and an awareness moment, and we both felt it would be more appropriate to, to come to this part. First, I want to thank all my colleagues who are wearing red. We are, in a symbolic sense, acknowledging that today is World AIDS Day. I must say that the statistics are staggering. Worldwide, there are 33 million people living with AIDS, 33 million, including 2.5 million at the very least, who are children. In fact, over 10 million have died in Sub-Saharan Africa, and half of the age of, of the new ones getting it are under 25. In our country, every nine and a half minutes, one individual is affected with HIV. Right now, as we're standing here, AIDS Watch, which is a list of all those who have passed on, is going on Channel 35. In fact, my partner, Christopher Lee Blaueman, kind of leads that. He was one of the early men who succumbed to AIDS in January of 1995. May Christopher Lee Blaueman rest in peace. I would also, like to also make it very clear that the numbers begin to change in a more dramatic way. Right now, just so that you hear the stats, in Los Angeles, Latinos account to the greatest number of new AIDS cases diagnosed, roughly 46% of all new cases. African-Americans are the most disproportionately affected by HIV. They make up approximately 9% of the population, but account for 27% of the AIDS diagnosis in this city. In 1992, women accounted for less than 5% in the city of Los Angeles, but in 2004, it has more than doubled to 12%, and I dare say it's even higher today. These are the, are the background stats. We, as a council, have put a motion in place to declare today World AIDS Day, but we would like to put an amendment to that motion, and I'd like our approval, and I will turn it over to Mr. Reyes to talk about it, but what we would like to do is amend our existing motion in memory of Pedro Zamora Day. You know, in the city of Los Angeles, in memory of his heroic efforts to draw attention to the worldwide epidemic, Ed will explain more about him, his sister is here, and his niece is here, and this is to give more awareness, and his name will also be subscribed onto the more, the wall in memoria, which will also be talked about. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for your tenacity, your spirit, your sense of hope in addressing this deadly disease. Colleagues, every 10 seconds, someone in the world dies of AIDS-related illnesses, but even more often is discriminated against. And with this in mind, tonight, I'd like to invite you to attend the Wall Las Memorias Project 16th Annual Noche de Las Memorias, a World AIDS Day event in my district. The event takes place tonight at 7:00 P.M. at the Wall Las Memorias AIDS Monument in Lincoln Park, located at 3,600 Mission Road and alleys Lincoln Heights community. Local groups, churches, family, community will gather at the monument for an evening of remembrance, music, and prayer. This year's theme is remembering our heroes. It's a very dramatic scene, colleagues, it's, they literally line up all the walkways, pathways with candles, and I'm not sure if they'll do this this year. And as you walk through it, you see all the spirit, the spirits, that's it, the spirits are speaking to you. It is an amazing image, and they all gather at this monument, a monument that took quite a bit of political courage on behalf of those who are sponsors, and Richard Zaldivar, one of the leaders, is, will be joining us today. And it took a certain level of bravery because in the Latino community, there is a strong sense of denial. Our Catholic religion, many other churches, have taken a very conservative approach as to what it means to suffer from AIDS. And as a result, dire consequences have been felt by many, especially the Latina women. Last night, I was listening to the Promotoras, the group of women who have been educated about AIDS, and the highest level of AIDS incidence are occurring to Latina women, women who are affected, infected by their partners, by their husbands, who come home, contaminate their wives, and then in turn punish them for being sick. And there's a level of ignorance there that needs to be eliminated, and it's through this education that we feel we can give the Latina women a chance to be able to endure such hardships if they're informed and know how to protect themselves. One of the heroes that has been a loud voice in this area, and we'd like to recognize him today, is Pedro Zamora, AIDS activist and star in the third season of MTV's The Real World of San Francisco series. Honoring the life legacy and memory of Pedro Zamora, an extraordinary educator and activist and a pioneer, especially in the city's Latino community in the battle against HIV/AIDS epidemic. So, I want to thank Councilor Rosenthal for joining me. I'd like to invite the council to support me in making this Pedro Zamora Day in L.A. And we're very honored to have Millie Zamora, his sister, and his niece, Melissa, with us. And with that, I'd like to present the certificate, and Councilor Rosenthal can join me. It's been signed by Tony Cardenas, Councilor Richard Alcon, Councilor Luis Sarr, who will be signing it, he's still in Guadalajara, and Councilor Garcetti and myself. Certificate of recognition is hereby presented to Pedro Zamora Day, honoring his accomplishments. Thank you very much for joining us today. It's a great honor to present this to you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, we have public comment cards. Would you like to call those now?
Can we, can we have them speak first before we can hear from public comment?
Some of them may have turned in cards.
Okay.
Your name, please.
Thank you. My name is Smith. It's an honor for me to be here accepting this from my brother. This is a great honor for me and my family, but more important for Pedro, Pedro and his legacy. We must continue his fight against AIDS, prevention, and work together to fund a cure. HIV and AIDS affect every person regardless of race, age, or sexual orientation. Les's legacy lives on, and is fighting for quality HIV programs for our community. My family and those who support Pedro will not forget this moment, and I'm very proud of my brother, Pedro Zamora, and what he's accomplished in his short life. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I want to thank you so much, Councilman Rosenthal and Ed, for making this happen. Richard Zaldivar, Executive Director of the Wall Las Memorias Project. Every November, I start to think about the time, the exact time that they shot President Kennedy. And it takes me down this road, looking not only John Kennedy, but Bobby Kennedy, and people question their greatness. They didn't have a lot of accomplishments in public policy in changing the system itself, but they created a difference in the world by their spirit and their leadership. Pedro Zamora fits that role. Tonight, we're gonna honor him by unveiling his name on the AIDS monument, but more important of all, we're gonna come back to all of you in the city council to ask your support as we make an application to the U.S. Postal Service to create a stamp in his memory. He is the first and the only person ever to come out on television about his status, and he happened to be Latino. That's something that our community needs as a mentor and a leader. Thank you to all of you. Many of you do so much for HIV/AIDS, and we don't forget it, but we need more. We need your continued support until we eradicate this disease. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Mr. Rosenthal, we have two additional cards, Mr. Kearns and an M.D.
Yes, indeed, and, and we will do that right now. I just wanted to acknowledge David Reed, who created AIDS Watch, which is now live on our Channel 35, that's being webcast literally all over the world, and he just called me to tell me he's getting hits from all over the world, from people who see their names and their friends. So, I want to thank Channel 35 for making that happen. I'd like to now introduce our city fellow, who really, Steve Simmons, who plays a major role for us on all of this.
Hi, good morning, council members and L.A. community. I just wanted to add a few words on the city's efforts to fight the HIV epidemic. As Councilmembers Rosenthal and AS pointed out, today we're commemorating World AIDS Day, not only in honor of Pedro Zamora, but for the international theme of universal access and human rights. I think UNAIDS intended to apply that theme in Sub-Saharan Africa, in Southeast Asia, the Caribbean, but we don't even recognize that here in California, we are slipping back to a point where people don't have basic access to HIV meds and prevention, especially considering the $80 million of cuts in the current year budget in the state of California, which have eliminated state-funded HIV prevention. This motion, and your speaking out regularly, as you all do throughout the year on HIV issues, is a crucial component of our efforts to get everyone in Los Angeles, 13 to 64, access to a free HIV, a free confidential HIV test. I'm asking you all to work with my office and, and ask the hospitals and clinics in your districts to follow the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention guidance from three years ago, but ask them to begin ramping up free rapid HIV testing. Councilmember Rosenthal gave us those numbers. You see how HIV is impacting all of our communities, particularly communities of color. To also raise awareness tonight, the mayor has asked Los Angeles World Airports to light the pylons outside of LAX red until midnight, as will the, the cap on L.A.'s Central Library. Richard Zaldivar and I will be leaving immediately to go to the Assembly Health Committee Special Hearing on the Crisis of the HIV Budget Cuts in California. We will also be asking you to support a 2010 legislative agenda that calls for the restoring of HIV prevention funding at, at the state of California as a priority, maintaining the AIDS Drug Assistance Program as a necessity, and making regulatory barriers to HIV testing, reducing regulatory barriers, a reality. So, this year again, we're, we're really proud to recognize incredible life, an all-too-brief life of Pedro Zamora, who has inspired us all to make a difference in the fight against HIV. Thank you again for the hard work you do.
And our last speaker, colleagues, is Richard Kearns. You see him on public comment here over the years. He is a living example and a role model for people who are with HIV. He's making a positive contribution to all of us by his testimony every time he appears in our council chambers. It's an honor to have Richard Kearns.
Thank you very much. This is my poem for World AIDS Day this year, and it's dedicated to Councilmember Rosenthal. Jeff was dying, I was not. A hundred carpozy lesions covered his body and made him look like Nijinsky in an afternoon with a swan, with a fawn, only skinny. He was my captain of bright and stormy mornings, my saint and my man. He was my AIDS hero, more than mine, and I hated he was leaving me. I wanted to pour into him all the life left to me, because I could never hope to be good enough to survive this plague by myself, let alone for anyone else, because I was cannon fodder, because we needed him. I told him so one day. He laughed, and then I don't remember how. He scooped up my tanned and Jim-Hard bod in his pale and thin and tangly, night-scarr'd arms, and tender kissed me several times, saying, "Here, I thought I was pouring my life in tears." Why? Because I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. Pass it on. Then he was gone. His words do not keep me from missing him, but they are a comfort neither God nor quilt has offered. My own truth to triumph with a balm no one else can discover, a manufacturer, invent or creator speak, medicine compounded with my blood and toil and tears and sweat. I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. Pass it on. I have struggled to do what Jeff could not stay to finish, and Sam, and Jim, and Russ, and Steve, and the too-too-many more. Too-too-soon, your turn will come. Let us make each other's lives more livable, more filled with sun and season while we can. Never forget, I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. I believe in you. Pass it on, pass it on, pass it on.
What we'd like to do now is we put a motion before you to amend the existing motion, and, and as you heard, Mr. Reyes went through the particulars of it. Could we have a second for that? Because we want to dedicate this particular World AIDS Day and the putting up in the memorial of Pedro Zamora's name on that.
Without objection, accept that amendment. We do have another public speaker on this, Mr. Rosenthal.
Sure. Could we, could we open or close the road?
Well, not yet.
Okay.
Mr. Meddowd.
Thank you, yes, and this is one of the times the responsibilities and the rights we're, I'm talking about, so I hope you appreciate what I'm about to say here, but this is exactly one of the reasons why you wouldn't want to vote Paul Krikorian, because the state had to slash the AIDS budget. the AIDS budget, and all these patients and people, there's no funding anymore for the clinics, and he's one of the ones responsible. So pardon my public comment, yes, if you're concerned about things that are getting cut at the state level, don't be putting those same people back into the city of Los Angeles. We've already got Alacon, and we've already got Corretts. They didn't know what they were doing over there.
He's off topic. Ron this particular item.
Honorable Dean Preguson is watching that one, because that's my free right to speak. Go to hell, city attorney!
You're on this topic, Mr. Dowd, thank you. Mr. Dowd, you've been warned on your comment, inappropriate comment. Mr. Rosendahl, that matter is now before us with the amendment. Mr. Corretts and Ms. Hahn, before we take the vote, Mr. Corretts.
Should I speak now or on the main?
No, now, before we take the vote.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Rosendahl for sponsoring this resolution, and Councilmember Reyes for his involvement with the amendment. There's a lot of good news and a lot of bad news relating to HIV and AIDS. The good news is that the World Health Organization estimated that the number of new HIV infections between 2001 and 2008 went down 17 percent worldwide, which shows that education and outreach and treatment are working to some degree. That's the good news. And as many of you know, I knew personally over 200 people that died of AIDS before the cocktails started coming out and allowing many people's lives to be extended. Really only a handful of people that I've known that have died since. The bad news with that is sometimes side effects make it too difficult for people to continue taking these medications. The good news with that is often medical marijuana mitigates some of these side effects and allows the treatment to continue. Those same reports had a lot of other bad news. For every five people that are diagnosed with AIDS and HIV, only two undertake treatment. Worldwide, there were over 2 million people that died of AIDS last year. And worldwide, there are over 2 million young people under the age of 15 that are currently We can do better, and we must do better. And of course, the worst news in our own state is that we had $80 million in deadly cuts at the state level. I'm proud that the city of Los Angeles, 25 years ago, was one of the first entities actually to take a responsible role and begin to take on the issue of AIDS and doing what we could. I'm proud that we're still a leader in that fight, and we continue with this resolution. So thank you very much, Bill, for your bringing this forward.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to obviously support what we're doing here today. Thank you to Bill and to Ed for continuing to make this a focal point of what we do here in Los Angeles. And as Paul said, there's been good news and bad news. Reading the paper today, I was particularly heartened by the L.A. Biomed, which is in the Harbor area, and they are finding, they were testing, I think, four new drugs. The results, I believe, were going to be released today, and found that significantly these drugs were going to do a lot in prolonging people's lives who have been diagnosed with AIDS/HIV. And I also share the huge disappointment in the state of California, particularly because one of the other reports I read, which I haven't heard this mentioned today, is that California has the highest infection rate among all 50 states. Roughly 5,000 new cases were reported in 2007, and I think that is absolutely significant. So when you make budget decisions that are absolutely contrary to what the people of your state are facing in their daily attempts at living, it's really unconscionable. So the news, the message that we, I think we always say on this day, is testing, testing, testing. I believe last year, several of us were in Watts, and we actually underwent public testing to try to educate the public on really how simple and how easy it is to be tested, and particularly for our minority communities. Our women are also being infected many times more than they used to be. So this is a message, I believe, of hope today. It is a message of hope. I also remember, you said you remembered where you were when John Kennedy was killed, which we all do of a certain age, but I also remember exactly where I was when I heard the news of one of my best friends, the first one who succumbed to this deadly disease. I will never forget that day. And this is about being tested, this is about hope, and this is about all of us urging those who do have power to continue to fund research so that one day, this deadly disease can be eradicated through drugs, or hopefully someday through a vaccine. So thank you for continuing to make Los Angeles a focal point of World's AIDS Day. This is really what we should be about. Thank you.
Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you very much. I just want to, again, welcome everybody along with Mr. Reyes, who fought hard for the memorial, Mr. Rosendahl, who fights hard every day, as all of us do, and all of you. It is time to take a memorial, day, every day, to remember. Richard, what you said. Richard, when I see you, I remember when you worked right out here in the hallway for the 14th district many, many years ago. But the fight of awareness for all people is so important, the tragedy of it, and when you mentioned Africa, the challenges in Africa to really focus on these issues are real important for the world. So I stand with all of you today in this very important memory of World's AIDS Day. Thank you for all what you do.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. That matter is now before us with the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item eight, called special for cards.
Number eight. We have Dr. Williams under number eight.
Dr. Claude Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A., and adjacent stakeholder for the Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Business tax, it's increasing. Unfortunately, also, we have the issues of all the parking meters. The neighborhoods are being inundated by people avoiding the high price of parking throughout the Highland Park area. They go about 100, 200 feet into the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods, mostly R1, and park there, sometimes three, four hours at a time. It's congested. We also have the gold line, the station there. Everybody tries to avoid the high price of parking. So unlike El Sereno, where we have no parking meters right now, for sure, I hope, Highland Park is being inundated by parking, and this affects the businesses. All you have to do is look at the number of storefronts now, unoccupied, vacant, and ready for rent. But nobody wants to rent in areas where there's high parking fees. Thank you.
Ms. Diawatu?
Please approve the renewal for the Highland Park Business Improvement District. With the Highland Park Business Improvement District in place, the last eight years, we have managed to reduce crime 40 percent by working with LAPD. We have also made 97 arrests. We have picked up 600,000 pounds of trash, 120,000 bags of trash, and we moved over 10,000 blocks of graffiti. We have also brought locally grown produce in an urban setting with the farmers market, and also hold a weekly gathering with the farmers market. We also bring an additional $250,000 in business along the Figueroa Corridor. With the renewal, we can launch free Wi-Fi, shopping guides, as well as maps. We also hold the second-oldest parade in Los Angeles and host the Haunted Harvest Festival. This is all done with the partnership of Councilman Ed Reyes. Councilman Reyes, thank you for all your support in making the Highland Park Business Improvement District a success.
Very well, that matters before us.
And, Mr. President, today is just closing the public hearing. The ballot tabulation will be at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, so that will be continued to tomorrow. Next item, please.
And the hearing is closed today.
Mr. Reyes, did you want to comment on that last item in your district? And the vote's going to be taken tomorrow, but since your return.
Thank you. Colleagues, Highland Park has gone through many improvements, and it's had its tough times and its great times, with the gold line, with the private property owners, and putting together their efforts, thanks to Misty, and the folks who've been working on this corridor. It's become safer, you see more people walking the sidewalks, and this is the kind of support we need during these hard times, especially for our small business people, people who are trying their best to survive the cash-strapped economy. And to be able to be in a place where we can work together and see these changes truly is something that keeps the spirit alive of holidays and these very happy days of celebration. So thank you, Misty, for being here, and thanks to the folks who have not given up and continue to support the Highland Park Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Clerk?
Item 15, called special by Councilmember Corretts.
Mr. Corretts, number 15. Mr. Corretts, number 15, sir. Called special by you, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, this is an item that requests that we name federally, that they name the healthcare reform legislation after Senator Kennedy. There are over 15 pieces of healthcare legislation that he authored and shepherded through during his notable career, which was the third-longest in U.S. history in the Senate. And so I believe that this will both help move the legislation forward to its conclusion and appropriately name a piece of legislation for the elected official at the federal level that probably did more than any other in terms of pushing through previous healthcare legislation and reform and fighting for national healthcare throughout his career. So I ask for an aye vote on this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. That matters before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 29, called special for cards.
Number 29, Zumadog.
Yes, as the viewers know, when REAP rent escrow comes on the agenda, it's time to issue an alert to let the people know in the city of Los Angeles here is what happens. Let's say you're a mom-and-pop owner of a building that houses people, low rent, you're a building owner, housing tenants trying to do good work, you know, not billion-dollar stuff, not million-dollar stuff, but stuff for the regular people of L.A. that have to work in the city so they can live here, those types of units. Well, not enough money to be made in those. So they put this REAP, all these fines and fees, and you got to do this and that, and, you know, the landlords can't comply. It's so shady, I say it's corrupt, and I say it's a federal lawsuit. So then what happens after these mom-and-pops can't comply, the city council member, you know, takes over the property, hands it to their preferred developer, and if you look at like Tom LeBonge's district in, you know, the Wilshire Miracle Mile, it's just condo madness. You got just, it's like, it's looking like ancient Greece over there with all these high-density condos going in there that nobody can afford, and please stop getting rid of affordable housing, because as you see, renters can't afford to live here either.
Thank you. That matters before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 30, called special for cards.
Number 30, John Walsh. Mr. Parks.
14 forthwith.
14 forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Walsh, number 30, sir.
I rise to in favor of the motion. What this does is Homeland Security is paying for a captain, a fire captain, to oversee homeland security here in Los Angeles. If you want more information on this and other items, hollywoodhighlands.org. You're doing a wonderful job here. I feel protected here. I feel much more protected here than anyone in the White House. I think we should have our local homeland security go to Washington, D.C., and do a stu, and give them an idea so that the president's life isn't endangered by criminal trespassers. And in Los Angeles, if I criminal trespass here, I'm arrested. Apparently, in the White House, you can criminally trespass, and they've been waiting a week to find out whether it's a crime. In a nation where you can be arrested for not taking your shoes off fast enough, you can go and criminally trespass the White House. One minute, hollywoodhighlands.org.
That matters now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 31, called special for cards.
This is property enforcement training. This is basically to give our officers body armor. Now, it's very important for our officers to have body armor, especially in, since, I hope everyone realizes that Captain has, Major Adan bought a gun that's called a cop killer, a cop killer gun. You can't sell them here in California, but you can sell them in Texas. Thank God for the cops. You know, I may have disagreements with the cops, but I am to the right of them when it comes to gun control, far to the right of anybody when it comes to gun control. And if you're interested about terrorism insurance, go to hollywoodhighlands.org and find out about that scam. Thank you.
Matt Dowd, on item 31, sir.
And I will be on topic every time. This one, yes, of course, training for LAPD. Oh, my goodness, the number-one thing, because if it's anything like the comedy cops you have down at the beach trying to enforce intellectual property type of things, because that's what this is, you know, how to stop fake stuff and how to recognize it, you know? Like the third time you're trying to go for the college championship, that was a fake attempt right there, you got crushed. That's what I was talking about the other day. Anyway, this is good. Get some more of this money and get some training down there. No one knows what inextricably intertwined means either, so get a couple hundred thousand into LAPD and teach them what that means. I'll give you the definition if you want it.
That matters now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 32, called special for cards.
John Walsh, followed by Zumadog, and then Matt Dowd.
Hollywoodhighlands.org, graffiti, yes. I was in the Hollywood Public Library about a month ago, and incidentally, the Hollywood branch has been overrun by racists. In fact, I took a picture of the elevator where someone had written the N-word on the elevator. I don't think it was any African-Americans or minorities. It was a group of white people who have taken over the library and caused the librarians and the people in the library to be afraid of their lives. And these people are militant racists, and I'll take anybody in the press out there racists, and I'll take anybody in the press out there to show how racist whites have taken over, so-called patrons of the library have taken over the Hollywood Library. We need more graffiti. You want to know more about this? Hollywoodhighlands.org. That's my fourth minute.
Zuma Dog.
Yes, I see, we have a debut of a new city clerk. Welcome. The graffiti, I say, first of all, it's an economic sign of the times, because you've always had spray cans, and you've always had buildings, and now we're seeing an increase in graffiti. First of all, let's talk about why this happens. Again, the economy, when you have bad times, when you have people out of work and kids getting worse off economically, it's because of your bad economic decisions, and you're causing a lot of pain and a lot of extra crime, and it's, again, a sign of the economic times when you see more crime and graffiti. Secondly, and I was talking to LAPD Chief Charlie Beck as we were introducing ourselves to each other, and I was letting him know that city council has a very dangerous combination here in the city, economically irresponsible and density. Density also causes graffiti, because the more density, the more people, the more crime and bad economic times, and so, I'm here to say, if we could still, well, okay, we need, it is very hard, I don't think I've ever heard a more chatty, just so you know, the discussion about graffiti is the discussion nobody in the city council chambers cares about. Nobody is listening. They're all talking right now, so let's just take a leadership here right now and say, I think we need massive nonprofits to get out there every day at 6:00 in the morning, contact your council member. They're powerless to do anything. The graffiti's popping up all over, and they always say, well, there's nothing we can do. So, citizens of Los Angeles, we need to unite, start some nonprofits, get out there, get the kids out there, and when you see it at 6:00 in the morning, you've got to paint over it. That's the only way. If we sit here and wait for Los Angeles City Council to do something about it, well, there's not going to be a square inch of cement that hasn't been graffitied over, and also, the signs, you know what, this is just impossible. I don't know what the hell's going on in these chambers, but I think a federal judge would say that nothing to do with the Constitution.
Matt Dowd.
I wasted two minutes on that. I wasted two minutes on that. Yeah, this is great, because it's only $5,000 for Greg Smith and Dennis Zein for their graffiti reduction. See, a year ago, it would have been $25,000, $250,000, you name it, out of the council, District III portion of Council Fund 100/28. So, I don't think $5,000 even buys you much. Probably one night, you get a couple of cops for a couple of nights, maybe cruise around and go, oh, yeah, okay, no, didn't catch anything, because they wanted us, Matt Dowd and Zuma Dog, even to be graffiti busters at one time. That's the only thing the city ever, they wanted us to go out, risk our lives at 3:00 in the morning and try and be snitches on all the graffiti so that we might get shot or something. It's the only way you're going to get rid of us.
Our next speaker is Donna Perman in Van Nuys. After Ms. Perman is Bruce Darian.
Warning, warning, warning. If you want anything done right, get Krikorian. He'll be the one that will get rid of graffiti. And I just want to tell you that Miriam is for it also. Okay, and there's other cutbacks the other way. Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, if we can make sure we talk about the item that is before us, general public comment is for items of more general nature. Bruce Darian is our next speaker.
Morning, City Council. I've been removing graffiti in Los Angeles since 1987, and I have a very simple way of dealing with this problem once and for all, and that's all graffiti is photographed and put online on the city's website with an award attached to it, and that anybody that can identify the markings and who that connects to, their moniker and their name, address, whatever information they have, what school they went to, then there's a reward down the line. And you could conceivably have one person that was part of a tagging crew or a vandal that says, hey, here's 50 people, I know them all, I know who they are, this is their names, and let the city police department go to work with the prosecutors, and let's get this thing done, because we're spending tremendous amount of resources to undo, try to undo destructive work, which, for the most part, ruins the fabric of many buildings, brick buildings. I know where I went, Taft High School, the front of the building is damaged from paint over on the brickwork, stonework and flagstone and all kinds of things, and the signs, and people are tired of looking at this. It's not art. They're just destroying the city, because they don't have capability to do anything that's constructive, and they're out there trying to make money dealing in narcotics, and it has to stop, and the city has to make, take very innovative ideas, ideas that go back eight centuries, the False Claims Act, bounty hunter laws. I mean, the time during the Old West when the sheriffs, they couldn't go out, they would deputize a posse, and that posse would go out and bring those people back to town and before people of their peers, and justice would be administered. But the city of Los Angeles, the state, and the United States cannot go on repairing destructive work. We have too many important things to get done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. Mr. Zein is our next speaker from the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to comment that I did offer the $1,000 reward to Zuma Dog and some of his fellows to go help eradicate graffiti vandals in the city of Los Angeles. So, we do have that reward for $1,000, anyone who turns in taggers in the city of Los Angeles. We encourage people to turn them in, not to risk their lives, they can simply turn that in by a 911 call. We are doing this transfer of dollars from my office to assist the West Valley, who's going to be working with the community members. We have the Posse Program, we have an Eyes and Ears program, other community programs, to help arrest individuals who are tagging the West San Fernando Valley, and this is the first amount that we have put in in a number of years. We plan to add to that amount from the counts in my office to help eradicate graffiti from the West Valley. It is an eyesore in the community, and this money will be well-invested, where we will have civilians working with the police, civilians will be the Eyes and Ears, we'll have a few officers that will then follow up to make the arrests at strategic locations. We will also be doing probation searches, parole searches at taggers who've been arrested at their residence, and the West San Fernando Valley, along with members of the city of Los Angeles, are fed up with graffiti, and this is another move to help eradicate it from the West San Fernando Valley. This $5,000 is well-invested, and this is the first allocation, additional allocation to help the LAPD do their job to clean the community and improve the quality of life in the West San Fernando Valley. And again, to remind the viewers that there's a $1,000 reward for anyone who turns in an individual who is graffitiing in the city of Los Angeles, and you can do that through your local police department, or if you see them tagging in the city of Los Angeles, call the police. If an individual is arrested, substantially convicted, you will receive $1,000, and those rewards are paid out to those individuals that make that call. We're not asking you to get involved in the physical altercation, simply, when you see it, to make the call. We're not asking them to cause peril to themselves, but just simply make a phone call when you see that happening. Again, it's a $1,000 reward for people who do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Thank you for your work in that area. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 34 called special by Councilmember Coretts.
Mr. Coretts, item number 34 is before us.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the renewal of a reward for $50,000 for an unsolved murder that took place in March of 2008. Kaitan Kaemov, who was 70 years old and was well-known in the Melrose community, well-liked, was stabbed to death while taking an evening walk around 9:00 P.M. It was a completely senseless killing. There was no robbery involved. The reason that we're renewing this reward is we have some hope that this may have been a gang initiation, and that someone bragged to someone about having committed this murder. I've personally been involved in these kinds of rewards before, where we were able to get someone that knew about it to rat on one of their friends or relatives who committed a murder like this, not because they care about the family or the community, which, of course, they should, but because they would want to take in a substantial reward. The community has put together around $20,000 of private funds plus this $50,000 reward, so this would make a $70,000 reward for anyone that would be willing to come forward with anonymous information, leading to the apprehension of the person that committed this terrible crime. So, I would ask that we renew this reward and, once again, put the word out and attempt to attract this information.
Thank you very much. With that, that's the last speaker on the queue. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 36 called special for cards.
All right, John Walsh is our first speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
John Walsh, blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org. This concerns Boyle Heights and a youth enrichment program. Well, it's pretty difficult to get around Boyle Heights now with the East Side extension and no gates. Incident, you know, I predicted there would be a series of serious collisions between cars and trains. I was in the media, along with Jose Aguilar, and the first major accident occurred last week. I'm telling you, all of this is on the blog. Read what you will see in the public, in the press next week on my blog this week. Blood is on the streets, people are being killed, the Blue Line opened with gates, the Pasadena Gold Line opened with gates, the East Side opened with no gates, the only one in America. It's racism, and who is the racism? Who stopped it? It wasn't Gloria Molina. Who stopped the gates with Boyle Heights? It was Zev Yaroslavsky and the West Side.
If we could bring it back to the youth enrichment program.
Thank you. Hollywoodhighlands.org.
Thank you. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. Just as a reminder, what is before us right now is the youth enrichment program for the area. Okay, Mr. Dog passes. He's engaged in a very good conversation. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.[1316.30][1316.30](Laughter). Just teasing. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 38 called special for cards.
All right, item number 38. Mr. Dog, item 38 is before us. After that is Matt Dowd.
Yes, I had to come back to clarify to pick up from Friday's conversation when we spoke about track maps. We had Greg Smith, he said, oh, I was about to prove that Zuma Dog is a fool, but he left the room, so forget it. Well, if he had something to say, he should have said it, because when we talk about track maps, here's what happens. I say that it increases density. When you want to, when the big density project that you don't want in your neighborhood's coming down the pike, it comes first here on the track maps. If you want to make a Grove or a Westfield or a Home Depot or something, and you need to change the zoning around a little bit, it comes through track maps. So, I'm here to say, I don't want any more high-density projects through these track maps, because you don't have enough money to run the city, and I am very much on topic, because I was here Wednesday, and you're going to be losing employees, you're going to be eliminating departments, you're going to be forced to do more with less, you're not going to be able to have enough money for trash removal to hire police. You're talking about firing police and brownouts for the fire departments. Okay, schools are being cut, everything's being cut. You don't have enough money to operate this city, and although they weren't paying attention on graffiti, they sure are paying attention on this. So, I'm here to say, people, it'd be nice to build Dubai World II here in Los Angeles and to keep building magic skyscrapers and to take Miracle Mile and to just cram it with $2,500 a month units that are not selling. You got Dubai World II, okay? And you don't have enough money to operate the city. And again, parks and wrecks, libraries, planning departments.
If you can bring it back to Track Maps, please.
Everything, everything is going to be cut, so you don't have any more room to take on further accommodations of more people. It's, you need to reduce the amount of people, and don't worry, you're doing that with your economic policies, and as you see, renters are fleeing and leaving the city, and properties are vacant, and this whole planning for disaster, that's right, Zuma Dog's L.A. Weekly article was called Planning for Disaster. My new follow-up is called Building Ancient Greece, and then it'll be Mad Max: Return to L.A.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that is Donna Perman in Van Nuys. And if we can make sure we're talking about the specific track maps that are before us, please.
Yes, thankfully, Eric's back, too, because these track maps, see, the council and the district, they're good liars, all of them. They lie well, they're politicians, the people at home understand what I'm talking about. They'll tell you, oh, no, this won't hurt the neighborhood, and, oh, this won't hurt the community, and, oh, you will get loads of police, and everything will be secure. And then the next thing, on Wednesday, we've got Bernie Parks, you know, predicting the Armageddon scenario. There's no more police, there's no more money, there's no infrastructure, the water pipes are bursting, but we'll still jam them in with these track maps. So, you know, as long as they're, look, it's, you know, I'm just going to let the market do what, you just drive downtown L.A. and you can see it as Dubai II, and we warned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Our next speaker is Donna Perman in Van Nuys, and then we have Wayne Spindler here back in council chambers.
Okay, yes, yes, we do have way too many Track Maps. People with a lot, too much problems. If you want to be able to have, because the CRA goes in, and they're the reason why, along with ESAL, so if you want to do it real quick, just vote for Krikorian and Miriam Fogel is for them, and then you'll sweep those problems away, and that's all I want to say.
Wayne Spindler, one final reminder, that if we can, of course, general public comment, you can make comments about the campaigns and other things that are going on, but we can keep it as specific to the item that is before us under the Brown Act, that is our obligation collectively. Wayne Spindler is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Regarding the track map on La Vida Terrace, West Sunset Boulevard, I've driven through that area, and it's already quite densely populated. So, all these track maps, and what other speakers have complained about, in the case, I can speak personally from this in CD5, they have, they go down and they get preliminary approval on these track maps. They'll take a house with a third of an acre lot, and they'll submit the plan that they're going to do something, and then they start tearing down the structure and leveling and nuking the entire project down to nothing. Then they file their plans, and in the case of my situation in 2004, the developer just took down a two-story 1920 Victorian house, which should have been saved under HPOZ. And La Vida Terrace, you have many of these type of properties built in the '20s and the turn of the century that are not being protected, and a lot of these things are going and intersecting and causing destruction of valuable housing that should be saved. And you go through these communities, and they get overtaxed in terms of the infrastructure. A lot of these pipes, a lot of these drains were made for single-family housing, and the developers are not putting their fair share in to increase the density and improve the upgrades that are necessary on the infrastructure, and that's why Councilwoman Perry had proposed getting an assessment of what is going on with the infrastructure in her council district because of all the new residents moving in. These plans need to be specifically done with that in mind and make these developers pay for those upgrades and increasing the pipe density and improving the quality of this, because they're destroying the communities above ground and they're destroying the community below ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That is our last comment from the public. Any members wishing to be heard on this track map? Not, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those items are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for tomorrow's meeting, to leave at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 15th, and for the entire meeting of December 9th. All for personal business, a motion is required for the 9th.
Okay, I'll move him, Ms. Perry. Seconds out, takes us down to 11?
Uh, 10.
10. What day is that?
December 9th.
Okay.
Which would be a Wednesday.
So, we're down to a bare quorum for that. We'll go ahead and move that, and approval is granted.
That clears the desk.
Colleagues, and for those members of the public who are following the medical marijuana dispensary issue, we had proposed talking about that tomorrow, but seeing as how a draft ordinance, I believe, is out from this morning from the city attorney, and the chief legislative analyst's report will be out this afternoon, in order not to just have a few hours of turnaround time for ourselves and members of the public, we will be taking that up next Tuesday. So, next Tuesday is when we will debate that. That should give everybody time to read, work with their staffs, with advocates, community, neighbors as well, and to look at all of the details of the medical marijuana draft ordinance, or the draft ordinance covering medical marijuana dispensaries. So, that is available online at lacity.org through our council file index, and the chief legislative analyst's report will be available this afternoon, so check at the end of the workday. workday, and that will be up there for members of the public at the same time that it is available to us on the City Council. With that, any other announcements, colleagues? Have any other announcements? If not, do we have any adjourning motions for today? If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions. Mr. Alakon?
Yeah, Tom LeBaron brought this to my attention. In the L.A. Times, there's an obituary for Bob Keen, who discovered Ritchie Valens and was a record producer and created Delphi Records, which is based in the San Fernando Valley. And I think many of the recording artists that he worked with are very famous historically, the likes of Brenda Holloway, Johnny Crawford, Frank Zappa, Barry White, and many others, including, I think, his first, the first Sam Cooke hit single, You Send Me, was produced by Bob Keen. He was the old-style record producer. He went out and looked for talent, trained them, helped them improve their lyrics, and went out and hustled to get them studio time and eventually promoting them, taking them on tour, old-style DJ way. So he created some tremendous talent, but most importantly, I think, was his contribution of working with Ritchie Valens, who has become somewhat of a legend, particularly in the Latino community, but as an American figure as well. Ironically, he only worked with Ritchie for a few months. He discovered him in May of 1958, and of course, he passed away in February of 1959. So in a very short span of time, some amazing things occurred. Ritchie Valens, of course, serves not only as a talented person from Los Angeles, he serves to inspire hope for many Latino talent even today. So we want to thank Bob Keen for recognizing this Mexican-American at a time when most people ignored us or certainly did not seek to promote us into high-profile positions. He was a man who deserves tremendous credit for doing so, and we appreciate him and thank him for his long life in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining me and members of my staff, my scheduler's sister passed away, Pamela Joy Stevens, born October 25th, 1947 in Massachusetts, middle child of seven born to Thomas Joseph Dunlap and Helen Ann Richmond, passed away on Tuesday, November 22nd after a valiant year-long battle with cancer, moved with her family to California in the summer of 1963. Her childhood nickname was Foxy Loxy, given her by her parents because she was very good at being sly, at not being blamed or caught for various infractions of the house rules. Unlike KJ, who's always getting caught doing something. Her adult nickname was Cement Head, and I've been asked not to ask what that's about. Loved all kinds of music, especially country music. Her favorite country artist was Willie Nelson. Loved all the holidays, especially Christmas. Faced many trials and struggles through her life, loss of her father when she was 22, followed by the death of her husband 11 months later. But I honestly can't remember whoever complained. Instead of saying, why me, she would often say, why not me? Faced her latest battle with humor, dressed up as a leprechaun during her cancer treatment this last St. Patrick's Day. At Easter, she created an Easter bunny outfit using items she found at the hospital, including using a decorated coffee filter as a bonnet. She loved family gatherings where they would all sing, dance, and reminisce. Favorite memory of her sister this year was 1961. The three sisters played on the same softball team, the Rollarettes. Pam was the catcher, Joanne was the pitcher, and KJ was a shortstop, and they were unbeatable. She was preceded death by her parents, Tom and Helen, her sister Joanne, and her brother Tom Jr., survived by two daughters, Antoinette Marie and Kimberly Diane, four grandchildren, Amber, Ashley, Amanda, and Donald Jr., and three great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace, Pamela Joy Stevens. KJ, our condolences to you and your family.
All members.
All members on that. Also have another announcement of four law enforcement officers killed. In a year in which law enforcement fatalities are down overall, 2009 has been punctuated by intense burst of violence against our nation's peace officers. Now with heavy hearts, struggle with another tragedy. Latest particularly heinous incident occurred just after 8:00 AM on Sunday morning when a gunman walked into Pierce County, Washington Coffee Shop and opened fire on four officers of the Lakewood Police Department who were going over plans for their upcoming shift. The four officers are Sergeant Mark Ringer, 39, Officer Tina Griswold, 40, Officer Ronald Owens, 37, Officer Greg Richards, 42. All four were veteran law enforcement officers with between eight and 14 years of experience each, and all four have been members of the Lakewood Police Department since it was founded five years ago in the community outside Tacoma. As many contemplate this most recent tragedy, we think of the families left behind, and we remember them. May they rest in peace.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that as well. Are there any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, we please call the roll, and we'll next be in session tomorrow, that is the second day of December at 10:00 AM here in the City Council chambers. Meantime, have a great Tuesday. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned.